February 8, 2022, we in Woodstock community here at school. This is the one I brought with me. So we die to the public. I believe the confusion of the United States of America into the government for which stands one nation, other God, invisible with liberty and justice as our.
Dr. Dittl?
Yes.
Dr. Ferrin?
President.
Mr. Gilmore?
Here.
Mr. Hedley?
Here.
Mr. Pomo?
President.
Ms. Sally?
Here.
Mr. Preising?
Here.
Okay, first item of the consent agenda is our consent agenda. You've received the consent agenda and the items on it. There's also an addendum, a personnel addendum that's on your tab. Do any members wish to pull any of the items from the consent agenda? If not, if you've got a chance to review everything, if there's anything that would make a motion with respect to the consent agenda, it is posted here on our material.
Move to waive the reading of and approve the consent agenda as printed in board book, including the February 8, 2022 personnel addendum.
Second. Motion by Mr. Preising, second by Mr. Hedley. Roll call please.
Mr. Preising?
Yes.
Mr. Hedley?
Yes.
Mr. Missally?
Yes.
Dr. Fisher?
Yes.
Dr. Gilmore?
Yes.
Mr. Gilmore?
Yes. Okay, next item then is our communication. Communication to our community members and districts deploying to express their point of view now to debate an issue. It's assigned to the public to identify by name, address, telephone number, the name of any organization they represent, if any, and a brief description of the topic to be addressed. Comments are drawn under three minutes, and our other end of our board call, the calls two colon two thirty. First item, person on our list, several times, is Dr. Girloff.
Good evening. Brian Girloff, president of Woodstock for many, many years, former board member. And I wanted to speak very briefly on the topic that I read about in the paper, that there is some consideration of combining athletic programs at the two high schools as an economical move. And I would argue strongly against that. Giving you a little bit of history, there's a few people in the room that remember the 1990s as we debated the fate of this school very intensively. And one of the decisions we made was we would extensively remodel this school with the expectation that a second high school would be needed at some point in the future. Our idea being, we didn't want a giant high school. Because we wanted to be consistent with some of the research that suggests optimum high school size is 700 to 1,000 students, give or take. And a big part of that reason is for the better participation or better opportunity to participate in co-curricular activities. Link, and that link then leads to better success in school and college. And I strongly would argue in favor of that. And I would give one more little anecdote. At about the time that we were having that discussion and debate, there was a big article in the Chicago Tribune Magazine on Gary Sinise, the actor, who was enjoying great success and was very successful in his career. But one of the statements he made in that, quoted in that article was, "The theater program at his high school," which was one of the suburbs, I don't remember which one, "saved that he would not have graduated or succeeded if he hadn't gotten involved in the theater program." And we, as we all look around our children's friends and our people we know, there are a lot of kids like that, that their ability to participate in a co-curricular, including athletics, saves them. And combining the athletic programs would drastically reduce the opportunities for a lot of children. Thank you.
Thank you. Next on our list is Chad, I don't want to pronounce him, forgive me.
It's hard for me as well. It's Chad Leswitz. Good evening, how are you guys?
Good.
Thank you for taking the time to listen to me. So I just wanted to discuss the masks, the mask mandate a little bit. I have two children who attend elementary school here in Woodstock. And I just wanted to just maybe suggest to you guys that maybe you let us parents just do a little more of the parenting than you guys taking over and no offense by that. But I consider myself a very good parent, and I know all of you here do as well. And I just feel that I know what's best for my kids, and I appreciate what you guys do for my children, because you all do a very awesome job, and I appreciate that. But I think a lot of it has to do with our freedom as well. And that flag behind you guys and in front of me, my brother fought for us before that flag, he just passed away a few months ago. And I think a lot of it has to do with our freedoms, and I just feel that some of our freedoms have been taken away from us, and I'd just like all of you to just please keep that in mind when reviewing this mask mandate and order that just came down this past weekend. And I think that's it. Thank you for your time, and I appreciate what all of you do. Thank you.
Thank you for coming. Rob Feller?
Hi, thank you. My name is Rob Feller. I'm going to keep it real short. I just want to thank the board for following the judge's orders and to make the masks optional and the testing optional. You know, I really feel that the parents, you know, we finally got the chance to do this, make the decisions for our kids, and I just appreciate it and thank you guys for following the lines.
Thank you for coming. Okay, on the microphone.
Thank you, sir, and this board for hearing our concerns and our suggestions. I appreciate your time and you being here tonight. I have prepared a short written speech, so I just sound a little bit more professional and flying off the cuff. Some of this is from my wife as well, who is currently taking care of our daughter, who is at home and is a student in this district. She's a student at BLDC, is at home this week, missing time with her class, time learning, growing with her amazing teachers and her friends. My five-year-old understands the importance of masks, knows that her health and safety is in jeopardy if she were to be in class right now. Public health and safety is not something to be flippantly disregarded. If my child becomes ill when she returns to class, as parents, do we get to press charges against the district? Do we get to sue Mr. Moan for his decisions? Do we get to sue those families named in the lawsuit for allowing those decisions? There was absolutely no communication from this board or Mr. Moan, preparing parents or students that this might be a possibility. There was no explanation as to why this was the decision that was made. You spoke to your lawyers, isn't adequate when you turn everything on its head. You have less parents, children, teachers, nurses, administration, staff confused, scared, and furious. There are ways that now, as a board, to make this right. Those who are screaming for choice are actively taking away from everyone else. They're advocating for our community to fail. Their care is not for the community, it's for themselves, and their perceived freedoms. Your job as a board is to act in the best interest of the students and faculty. Allowing this virus to run unchecked is what absolutely out of line with what is in the best interest of our district. This pandemic isn't over just because people are over eight. Put the mask decision our board made in August back on the table, it is the right thing to do. The primary, most important mission of this elected body, the administration, teachers, and staff, is the safety and well-being of the students. This is a no-fail mission. The court ruling handed down has no basis or effect on what individual school districts impose. This is not a political debate. Political ideologies have no basis on the safety of our children. This is not about freedom. I wore the American flag on my shoulder for years, sworn with defending this country, its freedom, liberty, and safety during my service in the Army. As a current medical professional, I have seen first.
We have 60 cheerleaders in our program. Our program does work and collaborate with our feeder high schools, coaches currently, in order to prepare the players for what is needed to play in high school and continue that excitement, momentum, and participation as they enter into their high school sports experience. However, let me share a few things as a parent and a board president that are crucial to the future decisions we are making with sports. Being competitive matters. It's not everything, but it matters. Just like the academic side of the house, we encourage students to set goals, have high expectations, and work hard so that they may have the opportunity to be in AP or honors courses. Most districts are proud and find themselves wanting our students to be competitive in reaching their academic goals. We look at on-track status, graduation rate, the amount of students we have in certain high-level classes, and we celebrate. As a youth sport program, we want to be competitive too. We work hard to build a system that prepares and teaches players how to excel at that sport. This year, out of five tackle teams, three made it to the playoffs, and one team finished first in their conference. We also had our tier teams go to competition and bring back third place. But not only do we want to be competitive, we teach them social emotional skills and build character, all things we want for our children, like grit, resilience, responsibility, commitment, but most importantly, we teach them the importance of coming together and being a team. Our youth athletes can't wait to come back next year to finish the progress they started. But now let's jump forward to our fourth graders. This is the age, believe it or not, they begin to look around and they recognize that as they are building this team, where they have each other's back, where they have defined each of their skilled positions, that they won't be together as a team when they move on to high school. They realize that competitiveness they establish, this team-ship, this family, will be split when they leave for high school. Sometimes we look at our eighth graders, and we may have 20 or 30 of them, but once you identify which high school they're going into, we are not sending enough over to each school. But we would be sending a nice group of players as a unit to one program. In terms of opportunity, no one will lose an opportunity. We will be adding opportunities, and we will be building the momentum and excitement we already have in our youth programs. We will bring some level of competitiveness back to sports by offering more levels of each sport. Freshmen will have a team to play freshman games, and so on. This does not exist currently, and rather than lose the opportunity to grow, they will still have freshman games that we currently cannot offer. I want to thank you for giving me the opportunity, Ms. Bidwell, by sharing that the youth sports should come and share this experience, because we are helping to build a community around youth sports, and we do get excited about the opportunity of remaining that competitiveness and excitement as you do on the academic side of the house. So I hope we can continue to partner in this dialogue as well, and I think that the youth organization, the parents, and most importantly, speaking and hearing from the youth athletes in our community is crucial in also making this decision. So thank you.
Thank you for coming. Chairman, meaning of this?
Hello, thanks for having me up here to listen to me. Obviously, I'm going to speak about the masks and the mask mandate. I speak on behalf of three students, and I've got to be honest with you, you know, I'm sorry that some people feel the way that they do, and I don't want anybody to feel unsafe, but there comes a point where we have to go back to life, and we can't wait for everybody to feel safe, and these issues are debatable. And to be honest with you, the learning environment is terrible. You know what, I could barely understand anything you were saying, you sounded mumbled. The gentleman over here, he had to take his mask off, because he knows we can't hear properly without it. It's ridiculous, and frankly, y'all look ridiculous right now. So thanks for listening to me.
Vince Gillis?
Hello, thanks for giving me a minute. My name is Vince Gillis. I'm here also speaking on behalf of three little kids with these masks, and I cannot, in good faith, I mean, how do we go on living like this and feel like it's okay? Like, if we have not conquered the curve at this point, it's incredible, it's not going to happen. Either this is the new normal, and this is what we do, fear thy neighbor, fear everybody. Like, what kind of life is that to live? It's, it's, it deeply sickens me and disturbs me that all this information that is flat-out just false is what we based this on for these last two years, and it's been deemed false. I mean, it's incredible. I feel, I feel absolutely, these kids don't have a chance. Not only the fact that we're scared of each other, you know, we need human touch, that's part of like life, human contact, human interaction, that's what it's all about, not, oh, what's in it for me, I got to look out for me. I'm terrified to death of this invisible thing, but my mental health and my depression, I'm way more likely to die from suicide than COVID, and I've been way more afraid of suicide than some COVID that, again, survival of the fittest, I'm sorry, you know, elderly. These COVID things, I'm sorry, I don't think my five-year-old niece is going to be, I'm not worried about her getting sick, and if she does, I have faith she will recover and get better. Like, this is not how life is meant to be lived. I'm not a talker, that's all I got, thank you.
Thank you for coming. Do you have any more sheets? Friday, Tuesday night. Okay, that's everybody who's sat enough to speak. Anyone who wants to address the board at this time, now is the time.
Good evening. TJ Clifton, just like to address the board on the consideration of combining sports programs at the two high schools. I'd ask the board that you consider setting it for a future meeting where it can be discussed and a vote can be held on considering whether or not both sports programs should be combined. I think from looking at the approximate $800,000, I think Dr. Moan was quoted as stating, would be saved by combining those sports programs, I think it's imperative as people elected by the taxpayers to consider what that money is currently being used for and potentially what benefits it could be used for, be that application to debt, be that other programs at all the different schools that maybe are underfunded at this point, and what benefits are we currently getting out of having two schools? And are we in fact actually giving more opportunities or less opportunities? Talking with various people at different high schools, coaches, it does appear that potentially we're giving people less opportunities, or essentially paying $800,000 to actually give people less opportunities. I think it's important that this body consider that. I also think it's important that we think about when these two high schools were created, by understanding from talking with people that were on the committee that made the decision or made the recommendation to go to two high schools, that the population that was anticipated at each high school is greater than the number of students that we have at both high schools combined right now. So I guess I would ask, why are we continuing with two sports programs if it's costing us that much money, if we're not providing as much opportunity as was anticipated, or actually providing less opportunity by having two schools and being unable to field full programs or full teams at all age levels? I would just ask that the board set it for a meeting where it actually can be voted, if people have positions on it, they can come and discuss it, but I think the time is, has come to at least consider this and actually get some formal action or formal positions from the board. Thank you.
Is there anyone else who should address the board?
Anna Zakora. Bottom line, guys, three days before this whole mandate and everything came about, or not mandate, before this lawsuit happened, Pritzker himself came out and said, "Give it about two weeks, we will be without masks moving forward." Omicron, COVID down 81%. Let's work on lifting the mask mandates, let's get rid of them. But since it was done not on his terms, it's a problem now. That's all I have to say.
Thank you. Anybody else who should address the board at this time? Anybody else? This is the time for the public to address the board, not for the other stuff. Nobody listens to address it, now's the time. Okay, move on to staff comments, are there any staff comments? Any more comments? Okay, then we'll move into super topic.
Okay, we have parent-teacher conferences next week on Thursday and Friday, after school on Thursday, new school on Friday. Parents want to reach out to the building if they saw them scheduled a conference on times available. And now I get to the discussion of the temporary restraining order and the impact it's had on the district. To start, we are party to the lawsuit that was ruled last Friday in Springfield. The judge issued a temporary restraining order Friday evening, struck down governor's executive order, along with the emergency rules issued by ADPH and ISPE. Like I said, we are plaintiff in that case. Over the weekend, our attorney advised us, as part of the case, we need to follow rulings for all of our students, meaning that now we would be mask recommended, not required for all of our students and staff. Again, that was based on the attorney looking at the judge's decision precedent and different things that go into that. You know, I don't have as much more detail on that. Because our legal expert, who's our attorney, has been since 1973, we rely on him to interpret the law. So it wasn't my decision, it wasn't the board's decision at that point to do anything or not, it was simply following the course of action our lawyer told us was valid in the state of the law. And if we don't do that, then we put a liability, the district, and open ourselves up to lawsuits for not following the TRO. So as of Monday, we opened up as mask recommended, not required for students and staff. In August, we had passed a resolution approving a plan to follow the emergency rules of ADPH and ISPE. Our attorney looked at that and ruled that the policy was not valid because it was based on rules that the judge had struck down. So that policy no longer is in place, again, will bring us back to the results of the TRO, which is mask optional. School bus mandate for masks are federal requirement, they're not struck down by this ruling, it's a similar regulation for masks that exist on airplanes. Attorney General had filed an appeal on behalf of the governor, expected to be heard in the appellate court in the next few weeks. You know, for us, Monday was a mask recommended day, as I said, not required, a big change, obviously a lot of anxious moments for many people, but our staff did a great job shifting and being able to adjust to our new world. Students are wearing masks, students are not wearing masks, it varies by building and grade level. Any families that have health concerns, we've worked with them to find the best option to meet their needs. And our staff continues to work diligently to work with our students to make sure they still get a quality education. Our students have done a great job. You know, in any case, we've seen, you know, any kind of harassment, the staff has stepped in and made sure that we were respecting each other's choice when it comes to the mask issue. So that's where we're at, I mean, that's kind of how we got here. You know, our attorney, in the ruling on TRO, is what sparked our current situation, but that's where we're at today. But during this opportunity, during this portion of the meeting, is opportunity for the board to ask any questions, to give comments, or to give me any other direction you'd like to see in this area? No vote can be taken tonight, as it's not an item. Yeah, let's answer any questions you have.
Does anyone have a really question, Dr. Moan, regarding this report?
I don't have a question, but I want to thank Dr. Moan and all the administration for spending time, riding the buses to be sure things went smoothly and hitting all the schools as much as you possibly could, so, and I, and I know that you put in an enormous amount of hours and sort of the other folks, and I want to commend you and thank you for doing that. Thank you.
Any other questions or comments? Okay, we have no one finished business, so we'll move into our new business, which is the update on the testable webinar program.
Seems somewhat trivial, unfortunately, I think with some of the other things we've been talking about, like, the timing of it isn't great, but I do want to clarify one thing that Brian mentioned, and Larry does a really good job. I don't think that article represented my conversation. There is a, there is a savings to be had. In my opinion, the savings in where you start this conversation right now, I honestly think we're going to lose opportunities for kids, and that's my biggest concern, and we can go through that. Again, I'm not sure, but the Woodstock football representative started talking about that, I mean, those are numbers that concern us, that we're not going to be able to have those two levels, and again, some sports are going to be fine, you know, boys' basketball, but there are many sports where we're not going to be able to field multiple teams, multiple levels going forward, and that's going to lose opportunities for kids. That's a bigger concern for me. Now, a thousand dollars is a lot of money. If we save it, we should pay off debt with it, in my opinion, it's clear to the board, but that would be all I'd want to do with it, but, I mean, just to be clear, and Larry does a great job, I'm trying, not trying to criticize him, but, you know, I think my biggest concern is that we're going to run out of opportunity for kids to not have different levels for them to play. The information the board asked for, I had given to you, you know, the first thing we looked at was the different levels, and it varies by sport. You know, football, they're actually, you know, because of football, we switch conferences, we now play with the, it's Big 12, I forgot the name of it, but Morris, St. Mor, we go south in '47. They've got three levels of football, we can't participate because we don't have a freshman team, as the president of the organization had mentioned. So the conference offers three, but we don't take part in it. Football, there are three, we take part in it. Boy soccer. Boys soccer, there are two, two levels at all schools, except for one, and all went out for one level. That's a sport that we typically offer three, we have offered four levels in before. And again, the other thing about, to understand about levels, and this is somewhat, this isn't, you know, have to be what everyone sees, but when you have three levels, what you have then is someone comes in as a freshman, you're, you know, again, you have a couple of kids in every sport, every couple of years, and, you know, will play in the varsity as a freshman or something like that, but your average kid comes in and plays on a freshman team, and they have the opportunity to compete against other freshmen, both internally, right, at their school and externally, in the games they play. When you lose that opportunity, it's impactful. You know, when you start talking about having two levels and not three, I mean, if you're a freshman, you have to beat out a sophomore potentially, sometimes a junior, the way the conference does it, for playing time. That impacts a program, the health of a program, because you aren't getting a freshman on the court and the opportunities to, you know, to shoot, hit, whatever you're talking about, whatever sport you're talking about, they're losing those opportunities. And then they compete against other freshmen at the same level. So that's one of the concerns about not having multiple levels in a sport even offered, or not having it in our schools. And, you know, it's a combination that is really coming to play here. When you look at girls tennis, where our numbers are strong, you know, four schools offer two levels and two schools offer one level. You know, so you talk about, okay, if they don't have two levels, what do you have to do? Now you have to start finding non-conference games. It changes your travel, and most of the time, the ADs can find one, but there are times where it's harder to fill out a full schedule. Boys cross country, four schools offer two levels in our conference, two schools offer only a very limited second level. Across country, they're going to run the race, you know, Bruce could speak to started on that, but they're not competing against members of student athletes, and competition changes somewhat, I think. Bruce, am I?
Yeah, good man.
Okay. So, I mean, there's a difference there. Girls cross country, similar. Four schools offer two levels, two offer a very limited second level. At our conference, fall dance involves your participation, sport totally, which I think is common in all conferences in the fall. When you go to the winter, boys' basketball, again, just like it's stronger for us, it's stronger across the conference. Five conference schools offer three levels, one school offers two levels. That means, you know, for one of those schools, our freshmen don't have an opponent, and again, that becomes a little bit more trying, because, you know, tonight's Tuesday, North at Johnsburg, Woodstock at Harvard, for boys, girls are the opposite, I believe, and, you know, the terror program goes on a conference night. So now our freshmen, actually Johnsburg's the one for boys, they don't have a game tonight, so now you gotta try to find a different game against somebody else. It becomes more challenging. And again, one conference game, not a huge deal, but you start, you know, magnifying that type to two or three, it's harder to fill a schedule, and then they have to find comparable schools. And, you know, North, the school at 9:50, you can't just go anywhere in the suburbs and play necessarily, because then you're at a disadvantage, you don't necessarily put kids in that position. Girls basketball, currently three levels, again, our numbers are pretty good there, three levels. You know, they're a sport too, and actually, you know, the girls played each other last week, great environment, but, you know, Woodstock didn't have a senior on the team. And I think, you know, when you look at that, sometimes that's a result of not having those strong three levels, so kids can play all the way through. Sometimes, you know, if you don't have that freshman level, you're not going to have those kids have that experience, want to keep coming back for those full four years. Wrestling, our conference has two levels, which we can't take part in necessarily. We do wrestle some JV, but we don't have two full levels because of our numbers. Winter dance is a sport, and again, it's a competition sport, only three schools in our conference have winter dance. Cheer is a two-level sport. In the spring, you know, baseball, conference has two levels, that's another sport where potentially if you had a freshman team, then you've got kids getting innings, getting at bats at the freshman level. And again, right now, if they're a freshman and there's a better sophomore, they may not play. If there's a better freshman, they hear they're a sophomore, they may not play. The three levels would allow for kids to have that. And again, there are different opinions on this too. I mean, I don't know that every coach would tell you that, but generally speaking, those three levels give you the opportunity to have kids participate in all three levels. And I was actually talking to Coach Sweeney, I know one of the teams in the Fox Valley for boys, and they say they don't even bring kids up hardly anymore. It's really important for them to have those three levels, freshmen all play freshman, sophomores all play sophomores, and, you know, juniors and seniors play in the varsity, and they had, you know, a successful three or four year run with that, because you have kids playing at the same level, building their skill set. Softball, only two schools in our conference offer two full levels of softball, and only one of them's ours, and North does that. Boys track, two, girls track, two. Girls soccer, four schools offer two levels, two schools only offer a limited second level. And again, girls soccer is a sport, we have a decent number, and at different schools, at different points. And then, again, it starts to become difficult. Boys tennis, four schools offer two levels, two schools offer a limited second level. And that is tough, because, you know, again, cross country, you can have a race, and if you are racing it, it's not the same, but you can still have competition. In tennis, you really can't do that. I mean, you can play exhibition against yourself, and that's not the same as having competition. So, again, and I know we had some discussion too, but our numbers dwindling. Every small school or school of our size is seeing the same problem, just around here that we're talking to, with the exception of Morrison football, there's some outliers there. But in general, our conference is seeing the same numbers we are, and that's diminishing the number of levels offered. Most of them don't have the option we have of being able to say, hey, if you want, if the time's right, you know, become a bigger school and have that opportunity. There are negatives. You know, Brian brought up some that are incredibly valid. You know, I brought the other one, like, we played each other the other night in the cross town game. I mean, the gym was full, it was a great, you know, hard and early, with a great environment. Not quite as good for hard as it was for early in the end, but, I mean, you know, good environment, good crowd, I mean, that's awesome. And losing that is something you really have to talk about and consider. But as you lose more opportunities for kids, I think you have to balance that and really look at what is best for the kids, and when is our tipping point for, when is it not offering more opportunities, which was always the goal, which I support 1,000%, I'm just scared some planes can tip the other way. And we also provide, just even looking at larger high schools, what are some of those programs like? And we had some of those numbers, so you can see the numbers that exist, that, you know, schools up out where we would be if we combined both schools today, you know, 18, 19, 50, somewhere around that. You know, what does that look like for schools and, you know, bigger teams, for sure. And again, there would be cuts in some sports, absolutely, and that would be part of it, because you're going to get that a little bit bigger score.
What you just said sounds to me like the issue is, is that the conference itself is not offering more than two, basically two teams, two levels, that's virtually every four, I think there's a tendency there.
Basketball.
But the conference itself is not offering enough, and if I combine schools and go into another conference, we would then hopefully be able to offer three levels as opposed to two.
Yeah, it'd be both, that we'd be able to have three levels, and then potentially that we'd be able to play three levels. And you can't guarantee that anywhere, but that would be one thought.
And just, this might be a stupid question, but the addition of a third level across some of the sports, is that taken into account when you're talking about the cost savings projection that you gave us, or is that just?
Yeah, because most of them are going to be three level. We staff them at three levels now. I mean, like basketball, we've got the three, baseball, we're prepared to do that, softball. So, yeah, I mean, again, that's why that number, I, you know, we have to be careful what it is, because it could be additional costs. There's one-time costs for sure, uniforms, all that kind of stuff. There's additional transportation costs to get them back and forth, so that number's a loose number. There could be a sport where your number is at a point where you have to add additional coaching staff, and that's why, you know, I think that the savings is definitely a factor, but to me, we have to talk first about what's going to give kids the most opportunities and best opportunity for long-term. And it's not an easy, I don't think it's an easy decision. I think people come and say one way or the other, you have to look at all these options, because there's many different pieces.
Has anyone talked to other local conferences, if it would be available to us to go as we were afforded to? Just say we do this, and then somebody says, well, we're not going to let you in our conference. Right, that would probably be?
Well, I think we have to respect the conference terrain too. I don't want to start marketing ourselves as one until we've made that decision. There's two or three that we would reach out to. I can't guarantee we'd get in one. I think at some point, if we hire our kids and facilities we have, we'd be attractive to a conference. But I don't think we start shopping ourselves. Again, the KRC has been a good conference for us, they're a good school, they're good members, we have to be loyal to them until we decide that we are going to do something, and then at that point, we become aggressive looking out. I don't think we can do it the other way. And there is no guarantee, there's definitely no guarantee on that, that we're going to get in whatever conference we want, for sure. That's a, that's a correct shoe.
And any decisions made is going to get three years to implement, is that correct as well?
I would say two for sure. Like, I mean, you give me this year, I would think, you know, schedules are made, football typically two years out, so if you're going to make it now, you're looking at two years to get things ready. And again.
And that would be an ideal conditions, considering that we would have to be accepted with another conference. And wouldn't it not also need to have two teams in most cases go into a conference if you're to join together? Because you can't run odd teams in a conference.
Yeah, some will and some won't, and again, it could be.
That can be a limitation. I'm just, I'm not even sure where I'm at on this either, Mike, but I do want to say, this is way more complex than most people, I think, quite understand. You just don't quit and join.
I just want to be clear on this. There's not like, we don't have a background deal. Like, we don't have a, I mean, honestly, we don't have a handshake, wink, wink, like, we do this and we're getting a conference. That doesn't exist. We're going to have to find a conference to get into, and there are no guarantees. The board needs to understand that upfront, absolutely.
I want to add one thing, two things. I don't think we should be looking at the numbers during a pandemic right now. I think we should table this for a year and see where our numbers, because kids did not go out because of the pandemic. And I'm telling you, I know for a fact, if we combine, I'm not saying we're going to or we need to or we don't need to, I'm open to looking at everything. When kids combine and they have to travel across town for a sport, I was one of those kids, and I keep saying it because I'm talking from my experience, when East and West Lightning combined, you have to travel to the other school. And if you're one of those kids on the fence, or you're not playing, or you just don't want to add an hour to your day every day, you're not going out. After two, three years, it gets really tired of getting on a short bus, or whatever, and going there and then coming back, and then going home. So if we think we're going to combine and our number's going to go up, I don't believe they will. I think they'll hold for a year or two, and then kids are going like, I don't want to travel anymore. And so that has nothing, I think right now, we shouldn't be looking at numbers. I think we should table this until the pandemic's over and we get true, because I know, I was talking to some track kids, or my son was, kids who didn't go off the track, and usually track at Woodstock North, the boys, it's huge, and they didn't go out because of that. And there's kids who didn't go out because of this. So I don't think it's a fair or a real true look, and the numbers are not really true right now. But I do think we have to look at it, and it's our job, and if we need to, yeah, we combine. But I don't think we're giving the kids a fair shot, and I'm telling you right now, if we do combine, don't think the number's going to get bigger, because kids don't want to travel across town. Absolutely not.
Jerry, I do believe that the numbers were trending down prior to COVID as well. I might, I might disagree with what they write up, but I do believe the spread is not going to a few years, but it's going on long-term time coming. So I think we just, I think we need to be open-minded. I would. But I don't think, I don't think COVID necessarily is a variable that we, we think it is. And I, we're just really on that place, but not necessarily not a decision at the end.
Mr. Clifton? I have a question for you. Could you hang around for just a moment? I'd like to address.
You're in trouble.
As soon as they finish, I'm going to ask you.
Okay.
I'm finished. Sorry. Can you approach for a second, Chuck? You said something during your comments that I would like to expand upon if you would. One of the things you said is, is your understanding that it's possible that we are actually limiting participation or reducing participation as a result of having two schools. What is that based on? What is the reason behind it, or why is that thought going on?
I think exactly what Dr. Moen alluded to in his presentation of the numbers, that you have kids that go out, that are freshmen, that because we can't field a freshman team, because other teams in our conference can't field a freshman team, they no longer play, or they're forced to play out for JV, can't get into playing time because there's a sophomore or junior ahead of them, and then ultimately elect to not play.
Sorry, I got something. All right, sorry about that. You brought it up, George, I got a few other questions.
That's all right.
All right. Is anybody else having any other comments or any questions for Dr. Moen regarding the head football? Does any board member wish to get any more information? Does any board member, we're not, we want, does anyone want to think about, how do we want the season to perform? Do we want to take a vote? Do we want to, I think we can't take a vote.
I don't want to take a vote, not tonight, and I think we should table this. I want to look at it next year. I don't want to get these numbers.
Any type of motion like that, Mr. Nellie, will require a motion.
Okay. I'd like to motion that we table this and look at the numbers next year. I don't think it's fair.
You have a motion from Mr. Nellie to table with a question until the next year. Do you care if I can?
I want to give you a second or three questions.
Will you want to come back up to the room?
Or was he earlier?
I think we do, so does anybody wish to second? If not, you would die to the last length of a second.
For discussion's sake, I will second it.
All right. Tell you, seconded? Does anybody wish to have any further discussion? Okay, move on, please. This is on the motion to table until then.
Mr. Nellie?
Yes.
Mr. Hedley?
No.
Mr. Perici?
No.
Mr. Homa?
No.
Dr. Ferris?
No.
Dr. Bidwell?
No.
Mr. Gilmore?
No.
Carl, can I say something?
One second.
Yes. I think Jerry is right in that, you know, I think we, and I don't mean to say I don't think the numbers are down because of COVID, I really, I really do think they were in some sports, especially the spring sports. Saying that, I would still like to have the discussion, Jerry. It's not that I want to act on it right now, but I still think it's something that we need to discuss for a period of time, and let, you know, and find out what, you know, our thoughts are in this community and stuff. So I think it's, that we should follow ahead with this, you know, in the future with some regularity.
I mean, I guess to that end, maybe one more point of information we can have, if we can get the numbers over time, maybe going back five years, so that we can see what the trend is and see what it was pre-COVID versus now, because, you know, if it's significantly down now, I think Jerry's got a point. If, you know, my sense is more along with what John said, this is something that's kind of been on the back burner for a while that we need to make a decision about, and if the numbers don't bear me out, you know, maybe we table it if, you know, that's what it is, maybe we just.
We can work on that for sure. I think the other, the other thing we could offer is, if you wanted a community engagement piece, we could bring back the survey, if you wanted to at some point look at that. I mean, that might be the missing piece of, different piece of information, potentially.
And I would agree with that, because I think communications is critical across the community as well as the school district, and I support that as well. And I want to clarify, Jerry, I'm not opposed to that. I think, as Dr. Ferris has indicated, though, communication's essential, and we don't, if we table it, we're just kind of stopping talking about it. We need, this is an issue, and we need to be upfront about it and start that process now, because I still think it's going to be minimal two years, even if we were to act on it now. So we can't, I don't want to wait. I want to restart the ball rolling. For me, I would support some kind of involvement with community members and or board members, some kind of community or community together to discuss this issue, so we have greater insight before decisions are made.
Does anyone wish to group that? Anybody think that we need to move forward definitively and have a vote next month, next week, or in a few weeks?
I think a poll might be a good idea. See if, if there's something that matters.
We can work and bring something, we can buy everybody, my thought, maybe we could do like we did with the debt, where George can make an informational video, and then we'll have questions after that, we could bring them back. If we can get it in two weeks, we'll try to get it in two weeks. And again, I want to show it to you first, and we'll take community input, and I want to make sure it's a non-biased look, it just hears the situation, hears numbers, hears everything included, and then get community feedback. I think the community's voice is very important on this, I really do. I think the community's voice is very important on this, I really do, I don't know what the community is on this, I mean, you know, I hear from people that are real strong, one way or the other, but I think it's important to get a, I'd like to have an overall look at where the community is, because I think to me, it's a big part of the puzzle.
Okay, there's no motion pending at this point, nobody's brought one, so.
We'll bring back a survey.
Dr. Moen's been prepared for a survey, and so then we'll get that out in the next couple of weeks, and then.
Well, I thought we'd bring it to you first, I want you to see it first before we get it.
I thought about two weeks, I'm talking about the next few weeks. We don't want to get community input, and we will resume the discussion at one year.
Hey Carl, can I just have a question? I don't know if this is a reasonable request, but would it make sense to have a separate survey for some of the older students in the district, like our high school kids, even though they wouldn't be impacted by this, to get their opinion on it, having, being the ones in the program themselves?
Good, and I, do you want, I mean, I think we survey everybody, in my opinion is we survey everybody, from, you know, I think the community, I mean, you've got people that, this building means, I'm one of them, right, to mention some out to it, history, with all these athletic programs, I think there, even if you don't have kids in the program, it's a point, part of the community, but I would survey everybody from.
Including the students?
Absolutely, every student, every opportunity, every family, every community member, I think, I mean, we're a community, school district, I want everyone's opinion to be valued in this process.
Okay, thanks.
All right, any further discussion for tonight on the high school board? Okay, that's all our new business, committee reports, I mean, committees met their everything reports from the last meeting.
So I think at the next meeting, we'll have more numbers on the results of the District Two Hundred Foundation Auction, it went very well for the online-only auction that they did this year, I think everybody was very happy with how much participation we got, and the board donation went for a little over what we spent on it, so.
And the cabinet one went for more.
Okay, any other committee reports? Okay, then the came motion adjourned, so move. Second?
Second.
Time for the, for Ferris and Henry, roll call please.
Mr. Perici?
Yes.
And Dr. Ferris?
Yes.
Dr. Bidwell?
Yes.
Mr. Hummel?
Yes.
Mr. Hedley?
Yes.
Mr. Gilmore?
Yes.